All righty, it's five o'clock, right on the nose on one, so a little bit late on the other. I'll call the Smith County Board of Supervisor meeting to order, and we always begin our meetings with the pledge of allegiance and the invocation, and Mr. Willie Clay Williams is here to introduce our individuals for that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we get to that, I'd like to introduce you to Kelsey Marchand. She works in our building and zoning department, and I'd like to recognize her tonight for recently passing her DHCD certification as a permit technician. So, good job, Kelsey.
Thank you.
And so now, I'll turn it over to her for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
And now, I'd like to introduce Reverend Dr. Charles Stewart. Thank you, sir, for the invocation.
Let's pray together. Gracious God, our Father, we thank you for this day that you have given us. We thank you for the grace and peace we've enjoyed in this day, for the many blessings. We're most grateful for the blessing of this community, our life together in this place. We give thanks, Heavenly Father, for all the blessings we receive every day for being members of this community. We give you thanks for those who help to bring those blessings about, our leaders, our law enforcement officials, all those, Heavenly Father, who deliberate on a daily basis and on occasions like tonight, to lead and guide and direct us so that we might enjoy the abundance of this good place in every way. We ask, Heavenly Father, your blessing upon us as we are gathered together this night. We pray that you would be united together around our common love for this place, our respect for each other, our hopes and dreams for the well-being of this community into the future. Grant, Heavenly Father, that all that we're about this night would be to the benefit of everyone in this community and to the honor and glory and praise of your name. Through Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen.
Now, we're moving into the amendment to the agenda. As far as I know, we have nothing other than we need, we have one of our board members wanting to attend on the telephone or internet, so I need a motion to allow her to attend. Have a second? Motion to second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed likewise? Lori, you're part of us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, moving on, presentation. Gabe Johnson's here to talk to us a little bit.
Members of the board, Mr. Chairman, good afternoon. At this time, I'd like to introduce you to Carrie Vogel. She is a night shift dispatcher for the sheriff's office. She's an integral part of our dispatch team. And at this time, I'd like to read a resolution for your consideration. Whereas it is fitting that we honor these individuals who during the course of their duties endeavor to protect the lives of their fellow citizens through both dangerous and life-threatening situations, and whereas dispatcher Carrie Vogel of the Smith County Sheriff's Office was truly heroic in her response to an emergency situation on July 30th, 2023, and whereas that morning at 4:44 a.m., a 911 call concerning a female who was in active labor was received. After being certified as an EMD, Emergency Medical Dispatcher, dispatcher Vogel successfully and appropriately obtained information determining childbirth was imminent and offered detailed instructions to the caller to aid in the delivery of a baby girl. And whereas after the successful delivery of the baby, dispatcher Vogel repeatedly ensured the safety and health of both the infant and the mother, keeping the responding EMS unit updated of their well-being until their arrival on scene. And whereas dispatcher Vogel's extraordinary efforts and selflessness in a time of crisis are a tremendous source of pride for Smith County, it is wholly fitting that we recognize dispatcher Carrie Vogel for her exceptional act of service. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Smith County Board of Supervisors that we commend dispatcher Carrie Vogel for her active hair removal on July 30th, 2023, recognizing her service to the citizens of Smith County, Virginia, and extending the STORC certified honor for her assistance in the successful delivery of a healthy baby girl adopted this day, adopted this 12th day of October, 2023.
Do you have a motion, a second? Have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, I hope we have unanimous. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed likewise? Thank you very much.
All right, and I'd like to present this to you. Also, Mr. Chairman, we have a certificate signed by the sheriff, and we have a basket of STORC swag that we'd like to present to her. Carrie, the family couldn't be here tonight. They had a prior engagement, and I wanted them to give you your STORC pin, but it's my honor to give you your STORC pin. You've joined that elusive STORC certified club.
It's nice when we have an emergency, we have a trained dispatch and trained sheriff's office, individuals that are willing to pitch in and help. It really makes you rest easy that we have such trained people. Thank you again from all of us. Next on the agenda, I don't mean to rush, but we got quite a bit on the agenda. Sheriff Schuler is here to give a, talk about our show, Office Accreditation Award.
We actually have Todd Klingfield here from Lepsy to present the accreditation to me here. It's already been presented prior to when we went through the actual vote last week. So, I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you, Sheriff. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Todd Klingfield. I'm the program manager for the Virginia Law Enforcement Professional Standards Commission. We were supposed to have Sheriff Matt Ward from Bonita County. He's one of our executive commissioners here tonight, but he is really sick and was not able to make, and he's very disappointed in that because he basically grew up here in Smith County, and he was very wanting to come here. So, he gave me a few things that he wanted to talk about. First off, he said that his parents went to RB Worthy High School, and his family, basically, was in Allison Gap, McCready Gap, Poor Valley, Broad Ford, and Rich Valley, and he had deep family roots here, and he spent a lot of his summers here working and playing and hanging out as a child. But he felt that this was such a big honor that he really wanted to come down and share this with Sheriff Schuler and this community because it means a lot to him to see Smith County work so hard to get this prestige award.
What was that name again?
Matt Ward, W-A-R-D. Yes, sir. In August, I sent three assessors down here to the Smith County Sheriff's Office to take a look at every aspect of the sheriff's office and how they operate. They looked at the administration, operations, the personnel part of it, as well as the training. And some of the things that they pointed out to me in their report was extremely beneficial for me, but also to the commission to consider. A few things that they talked about was the static display where they had an opportunity to walk through your sheriff's office, the courthouse, and meet members of the sheriff's office. And in doing so, they spoke of meeting Deputy David Frye, Lieutenant Tony McCormick, Deputy Clyde, Sergeant Robinson, of course, Sergeant Johnson, and also spoke of Ms. Kim Medley of very high regard. And what they talked about is how professional they were and how they knew their job and how dedicated they were to your all's community and the service of this community. And I thought that was tremendous. And you think about it, here in the Commonwealth, there's just over 400 law enforcement agencies, and out of those 400, only 106 are accredited, and it's a tremendous honor. They had to prove 192 standards and over 570 bullets, and they did so with a perfect score, a perfect score. So, tonight, on behalf of Secretary Cole of the Commonwealth and Jackson Miller, the Director of DCJS, Sheriff, I'd like to present to you your certificate of accreditation and give you the floor here for things you'd like to say, but congratulations.
Thank you so much. I'll keep the brief because we've got a lot going on. We were told in the beginning when we started this journey that it was going to be a journey and that there's a lot to it. And here we are. We made it, and I say "we" because this was a team effort. It's not me. It is my team, a lot of them sitting out here, my accreditation manager, Sergeant Robinson, and I give credit to all these heroes out here. It's not about me. It's about them. They worked so hard to achieve this goal, and it is a goal to be proud of. And somebody said, "Well, we have to go through reaccreditation in four years." No, we started the next day. We do this every day. This shows what a professional sheriff's office that we have, and I'm proud to be part of that, and this is just a tremendous, glad day for me. Thank you all, all your hard work.
I believe you want to read that?
I'm going, I'll just give a quick little update, and Ms. Richardson will actually read the resolution for us. You'll hear plenty from me later on today. So, Operation Green Light is a partnership between the National Association of Counties and the National Association of County Veteran Service Officers in cooperation with VFW, American Legion, and a lot of the other veteran groups. And it's basically a call to honor the veterans that we have in our community based around the week that surrounds Veterans Day. So, November 6th to November 12th this year, we ask that everybody that can put a green bulb in their front porch light, put a, somehow shine a green light to honor the veterans. And we have the resolution here. I'll let you read.
Thank you. Smith County Board of Supervisors Resolution in support of Operation Green Light for veterans. Whereas the residents of Smith County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who have selflessly served in our country and this community in the armed forces, whereas the contribution and sacrifices of men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Smith County seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all, and whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than $52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. And whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk of suicide during their first year after military service, and whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light veterans. And whereas Smith County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted, that now therefore be it resolved with designation as a Green Light for veterans, County, Smith County hereby declares from October through Veterans Day, November 11th, 2023, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. And be it further resolved that in observance of Operation Green Light, Smith County encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who have made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in a window of their place of business or residence from November 6th through November 12th, 2023, adopted this 12th day of October, 2023. Smith County Board of Supervisors.
I know it's highly unlike, highly unusual, but I'd like to make that motion as chair. I'm one of the two veterans, and Courtney is the other, and it means a lot. It means a lot. So, I made the motion, Courtney has seconded, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All righty, sounds like it was unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, we were hoping that we would have the VFW folks or American, but I'm not seeing, I don't think anybody was able to make it, but we'll make sure they get copies of the resolution to display.
Sounds good. I'm one of those Vietnam era people who came in, and I tell this story a lot. When I came home in '74, we were told, when we flew through Hawaii, they told us to take our uniform off and sneak back into the country. We were coming in through Travis Air Force Base, and I'll never forget that. The world had changed since I had left here in 1972. When I came back in '74 and was told to take my uniform off and sneak back in, I still haven't got over. That was almost 50 years ago. So, I thank you for this recognition we've given these people now who are coming home and needing to readjust. Because it's a different, if you've been time overseas especially, and you come back to this country, there's a lot of adjustments that takes place. You do not realize how the rest of the world feels, the freedom that our constitution allows us to have in this country that we take for granted. If you served any time in the military, you served any time overseas, you realize it's not free, and we need to defend that constitution. That's my sermon for the night. National Fire Prevention Week.
One more resolution. I do have a resolution. We have several members of our fire community in the audience. While I'm reading, Mr. Chairman, if you want to come down and get a picture with the certificates, I'd like this to be a good, another photo op for the newspaper if they need anymore. So, resolution in support of Fire Prevention Week 2023. Whereas Smith County is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our beautiful county, and fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk of fire. And whereas home fires killed more than 2,800 people in the United States in 2021, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 338,000 home fires. And whereas cooking is the leading cause of home fires in the United States, and fire departments responded to more than 166,000 annually between 2016 and 2020. And whereas two of every five home fires start in the kitchen, with 31% of those fires resulting from unattended cooking, more than half of reported non-fatal home cooking fire injuries occurred when victims tried to fight the fires themselves. Children under five face a higher risk of non-fire burns associated with cooking than being burned in a cooking fire. And whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying, and reported home fires almost half in half. And whereas Smith County's first responders are dedicated to reducing the appearance of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, the Smith County Board of Supervisors, along with the town councils of Chilhauie, Marion, and Saltville, have established the automatic aid program throughout the county to provide improved services and numbers to mitigate the effects of the conflagration. And whereas the Smith County Board of Supervisors supports and gives gratitude to the responders of Smith County and that provide the necessary, the services necessary to continue to keep the fire, the public safe, and the Smith County Board of Supervisors recognizes the families of our responders that respond to their loved, that support their loved ones in their service. Get ahead of myself. And whereas the 2023 Fire Prevention Week theme, Cooking Safety, starts with "You Pay Attention to Fire Prevention," effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Smith County do hereby proclaim October 8th through 14th as Fire Prevention Week. We urge all Smith County citizens to practice safe cooking methods, as well as educate your children during Fire Prevention Week 2023, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts in our Smith County Fire and Emergency Services, adopted this 12th day of October, 2023.
And fellas, I want to take this chance for a little public relations. Now's a good time for you in the public, and you have not donated to your volunteer fire department or to your fire department that was served your house. Now's a good time to write that check to them because when you have a fire, it's nice to know somebody will be there. Years ago, I was working in Bristol, and I came home one night, and everybody's sitting out in my yard, the fire department, everything, and one of the guys who'd known me since I was a little boy come in and said, "Your wife's just cooking supper." So, but they showed up anyway. So, I appreciate it when you do show up. I appreciate it, and I know a lot of people do, so thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Just a second, I'll work with you. Go ahead now, Lori.
I just wanted to say this is also a good time to remind folks to change the batteries in their smoke detectors.
All right, thank you. I guess now I entertain, now that I've given that, I entertain a motion to approve it. I'm going to, do I have a second? Any discussion? It would be better to prove it now. I'm in trouble. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed likewise? Sounds like unanimous. Mr. Philip Glavens is here to present the Smith County Works program.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's a privilege to be with you tonight. I look over at your attorney, and I see some sweat beads coming up on his forehead because anytime you give a lawyer a microphone and a captive audience, it's never typically a good thing. But I promise I won't trespass on your time too much tonight. I'm excited to present this program to you, but first, I'm sharing with you that we have a problem here in Smith County. The Air Force officer in me will not let me bring a problem without a solution, so I do have a proposed solution for your consideration as well. The problem is, is that our jails are full, that we are paying approximately $40 per day per inmate, that we have apathy here in the county, and that we also have a dying need of volunteers. So, my proposed solution to you is establishing what I'm calling Smith County Works, an alternative sentencing program for non-violent offenders. Inside your package, you'll see that I've given you the playbook, and I also have a cost-benefit analysis there. So, what a non-violent offender is, is someone who is typically on probation and has violated their probation. It's felony-level probation. Someone who has been accused of possessing controlled paraphernalia, maybe a meth pipe, or maybe they have been an offender in other ways that don't involve victims. Please don't confuse what I'm saying by indicating that jail is not an appropriate place. Jail's the right place for certain crimes. Those crimes are murder, thieves, those who distribute drugs, those who rape people. That's what jail is intended for, and that's what I intend to keep it full of when and if I'm successful in this November election. The reason why I've given you the playbook here with the Smith County Alternative Sentencing Program is because I'm not sure who will be successful in November, but I want the successor to have the tools at his or her fingertips to see this through. So, the way this program works is it would facilitate this board, this organization, hiring a community works coordinator. A community works coordinator is akin to a probation officer, albeit uncertified, but someone who will enforce a strict community service hour requirement. They'll get out into our communities, beautify our communities, and give back to the county. What we're looking for in that aspect is one that not only increases that person's civic and community-minded mission, but also one that allows others to see that they're wearing a vest, a vest that will say convict, a vest that is designed to generally deter other people from committing types of crimes, that would put them on the side of the road picking up trash and beautifying our area. This will not only go on to benefit Smith County, but it will also serve as a general deterrent tool, which I think is just as equally important. The estimated cost for this program is, and Mr. Chairman can correct me on this, I think I was ambitious when I set a salary of $45,000. I think a realistic expectation of cost is going to be closer to $75,000, when you include a $45,000 salary, a $20,000 base benefit package, and then as well as a $5,000 office overview. But as you can see, the money on the cost-benefit analysis there, if we have 20 offenders in the program at $40 per day who are facing a minimum of 30 days in jail, that's to the tune of $24,000 of saving that this county could enjoy per month, times that by 12 or over a quarter of a million dollars. So, what I'm presenting you here with is an opportunity to save financial resources and to invest others in our community. This is certainly something I can't do alone, and this is, we've tried this program out. We did a test run at Chilhauie. A friend, a mentor of mine, Coach Smar, actually, we ran one person through the wickets on this, and that person was able to give back to the town of Chilhauie when he was accused of committing a felony-level damaged property and was able to avoid jail time. What this doesn't do is avoid convictions. We need convictions on criminal records, but we also need to believe in the rehabilitation aspect of our wrongdoers. Not so long ago, I was a defense attorney for the Air Force, and I stood in front of many military judges, and I explained to them that a period of incarceration is like taking an ice bath for an athlete. An athlete who jumps into a pool of ice water is going to feel initially shocked. They're going to have difficulty breathing. Their mind's going to be racing, but eventually, in three, four, maybe five minutes, that ice bath is going to be numb to them. And that's what I don't want to happen here in Smith County. I don't want wrongdoers to be numb to jail. I've received support from the town of Marion's manager, Bill Rush, who is excited about this program. I anticipate receiving the same support from the town of Chilhauie as well as the town of Saltville. But I'm not here tonight asking for money. What I'm here tonight asking for is your feedback. I'm here tonight to see, what am I missing? How can we improve this program? How can we make it work during the county? Pending your questions, that's all I have.
I was just going to ask you, how many people right now would you say estimate qualified for this program that we have in Smith County?
I would be afraid to put a number on it, but what I will tell you, that every day, every Tuesday and Thursday, we have probation violations, and we're mandated by sentencing guidelines, and those guidelines typically come back between 30 and 100 days in jail. And so, for those that we're sending to jail on probation violations, they are fitting squarely in this. I have no, I have no reason to believe we won't fill this program up with the 20 folks. And I think we could exceed 20, but I think we're going to, in doing so, we would have to hire an additional body just because more to manage and supervise.
I think our cost for the jails gone up, too, in that new budget that's being imposed, so you probably underestimated the savings.
Yes, sir.
Who will this person work under? Would it be Commonwealth Attorney's Office, this office here, sort of like the victim witness?
Yes, sir, that would be my recommendation, is that person would work closely, much like Susan does with the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, but ultimately report to the county administrator, and I think that would be the appropriate venue here.
What's it going to work like for the county or employers?
Well, that's a great point, sir, and what my recommendation is, is that each locality establish some work sites for them, and they would voluntarily make, say if it was a factory, that would voluntarily join on. The beautiful part about having civilian employers come in in our neighboring counties and wise, Russell County, what they've actually seen is these folks who have done a knockout job, once they complete the program, are sometimes offered gainful employment at one of those factories or employees.
So, their employer would pay their salary?
After they've completed, they would receive no salary, just fitting in this program. This is effectively, you don't go to jail as long as you complete this program and you stay drug-free while doing so.
I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
So, what would be the, what would be the person who's in this program violated? What would be the sort of litmus test when they would actually go to jail?
That's a great question, sir, and what we have in place here would be a suspended time of incarceration. So, if they would, they would have 99 days of jail time hanging over their head, and if and when they fail out of the program, they would do that by failing a urinalysis, failing a report for work, failing to complete their community core requirements, and when they do that, then they go straight to jail. So, we're essentially allowing them to choose their own destiny.
How does it affect someone that may have?
Same way as, yes, sir, that's a great question, and the same way would be as if they were going to jail. These people are those who are, no kidding, on the track to incarceration. So, if they're going to jail, this is the only option. So if they're going to jail, this is the only offer ramp. You're not going to jail, but you might be able to work out where you can work at night for your employer, but your full day job here in lieu of jail is working for the county or for one of these sites. You know, I was reminded when I was, when I was a kid, my grandmother was so proud of how beautiful our interstates were and I remember this, she would wait for our family members to come in and show them the sides of the interstate and the roads where we had these beautiful flower beds growing and it was really, it was remarkable. And we have a wonderful crew now, but they're just overworked and a program like this would allow us to beautify Smith County and restore what it used to be when, you know, in the early 90s when we had flower beds growing up in the middle of the medians.
Could the, so this is in lieu of jail time and as far as any kind of fees or anything like that, would they be responsible for helping support that program?
Absolutely, and so they would be, there are hours and it's in your handbook as well. So initial sub fee would be at $25 to purchase the vest that says that they're a convict or a member of the Community Works Program for the General Lieutenant message, but then your question is fees and restitution. They can work off fees, court associated fees, lawyer, appointed lawyer fees and court costs, but not restitution for victims. So if they're ordered to pay restitution for victims, they need to do that by way of an active supervised probation sentence.
Forgive me if this is a stupid question, but my thoughts turn to if we have them in the program and they're doing a job onsite for an approved location and they wind up injured in some capacity, what liability, if any, would extend to the county, the Sheriff's Department, the court system, whomever besides that individual that may have harmed him, say in a car accident or some crazy thing?
It's a great point and one that's remedied by way of an indemnification clause. So essentially in order to participate in the program, they would have to sign an indemnification clause that would not avail or shield whether the county from gross negligence, but any other type of negligence it would. So that would be, it would certainly be a question I would encourage you to consider with your county attorney. But I will tell you that we're not reinventing the wheel here, that this program is alive and well in Wise Russell and Scott counties and I'm looking to bring that here to Smith County.
Mr. Neal, you have a question?
Actually, Mr. Ralph asked the exact same thing I was going to ask.
Great minds.
All right, any other questions?
Just something like the trash pickup, the way it works, it works to pay off fines?
It's exactly like that, sir, but the problem with trash pickup and I think if Mr. Rush were here to tell you tonight is we don't have anybody to supervise it other than that we're putting that burden on the locality. Whereas if we have an independent person who can not only get them counseling, help and administer drug screens, but also to ensure they're showing up for work, that's the difference between this program. It's an additional layer of accountability.
And what is your ideal person in this position that ever sees it? I know you said technically certified probation officer or something like that, but I'm assuming you look for a background in?
Right. If I had my rather, it would be a certified probation officer because that's what this person effectively is. It's someone like Michelle Ward, Michelle Ward, who is our Recovery Court Coordinator. It's someone who is able to provide counseling, see that these folks are going through struggle in life and then to rehabilitate them. And all of those things are, you can check a box by hiring a probation officer, but I'm not sure that the resources would be there in place to do that initially.
So with this being done, if it was, if it was to be approved and we just move forward with this successful program and everything, is this something that would be an issue from the jail that's a real deal?
Mr. Chairman, I have one.
Go ahead.
Follow it. You've identified as a target initial enrollment of 20. Is there any thoughts of bringing it up to a larger scale if it would merit such?
I think that would be wonderful. My hesitation with that on the outset is we don't know what we don't know yet and then additionally is can one person supervise active more than 20? My fear is no. I think once we exceed the 20 threshold, then that's going to be a full time, full workload. So what I'm looking for first in this program is quality over quantity and then if we can expand to maybe even hire an additional part-time person if we see the value added, then yes. Thank you.
Any other, any other questions?
Thank you all for your consideration of this and if you have any feedback, I would certainly be welcome to receive it at any point in time. Thank you.
Thank you. The Lane Group is now here to present the countywide well anticipated water study program. It's going to be full of good news.
We hope so. You're calling an attorney up with an engineer, I don't know if that's a good thing or not. That's right, yes, sir. I brought a big map, I brought the water study, but one thing I went off and forgot was my hard copy of the thing, so we can see it, I think, pretty good from here, Kevin. My name is Matthew Lane. My business partner, Kevin Heath, is here, we are the owners of the Lane Group. We're very happy to have been a part of this study, we're very proud of it. We'll try to go through it quickly so as to not take up too much time, but we are very proud of the study. We think it's going to be an amazing tool for the county to use going forward when it comes to the water systems in the county. One of the most important services that we can provide our citizens is potable water and fire protection too. And that's why this study was so important, but the study's purpose, excuse me, was to develop a comprehensive countywide look at all the water systems that we have here in Smith County. We wanted to evaluate the existing conditions of all the systems, we wanted to look at their needs, we wanted to look at the unserved areas in the county and try to figure out how we get water to those areas if it's needed. We really wanted to develop a master plan that we could use going forward to develop improvement projects and planning so that we know where we're going to go and where we want to go with our water systems. Some of the great things come out of the study, we were able to compile all the mapping for all the systems, so now we have comprehensive water system maps and not only are the mapping finished, but we did it in GIS format. So all this data can be transitioned over to the county's GIS system. So for the first time I think ever, we've got a really good map of all the water systems within the county, including the tanks and pump stations, Kevin will talk about that in just a minute. And we also now have a comprehensive hydraulic model of the county's water system setup. So we'll be able to look at things in our system to determine, I know fire hydrants is a big thing. If we want to look at an area in the system where we think we want fire hydrants, we'll be able to use that hydraulic model to determine what improvements are going to be necessary in order to get those hydrants on those lines. So again, we looked at financial funding sources, how do we fund this work? So what happened was, and really this is kudos to the county, it was a study that was funded by the county, it was a county water system study, you all involved all the other water systems in the work. So we actually evaluated all the different water systems and we got them all involved in the study. Mr. Williams helped us set up a steering committee. We asked every water system provider in the county to sign a member to the steering committee to be a part of the work for the study. We met with them monthly here to give them a progress report on what was being done and to get feedback from them. We asked them for a lot of information which they provided us, which was absolutely necessary for completion of the study. Now toward the end, we did bring up consolidation and talked to them about who might be interested in joining together to form a countywide PSA, which we think would be a very good idea. At this time, we didn't get a lot of interest in that, but as we'll talk about later, it's something that we think we definitely need to keep on the radar because, you can see I've got a chart up there, that's all the counties in the three PDC area called Southwest Virginia, we were all seeing a decline in population base. We're all seeing our water systems get older, which means they're getting more expensive to maintain. So we've got more expensive to maintain systems with less people to do so. So we're going to have to talk about things like cooperation and consolidation in the future.
I'll let Kevin take over from here.
Thank you, Matthew.
Sir.
And I know that's a little bit hard to see, but hopefully you have, or we have made available to the county PDF copy of the full study, which I've got a copy here that has a lot, a lot better mapping, but again, one of the things that we did and we spent a lot of time on is compiling the overall system map for the county and each of the different colors represent one of the six water service providers within the county. Good coverage there within the county, but there again, one of the things that we found and we'll discuss in a little more detail is that although there are six different service providers and a little bit of overlapping areas, there isn't a huge amount of interconnectivity between those systems. We're operating very largely as six independent water systems with a limited amount of cooperation or interconnection between. One of the first things that we did when we started the studies, we sent out a list of information sheets that we requested from each of the systems. A little more difficult for the county in that, yes, you are a single entity, but you operate a number of systems. So what we asked for was a breakdown, each independent system for calendar year 2021, total amount of water used in your system, total amount of water billed in your system, total number of customers in that respective system. Breakdown of those customers, how many are residences, how many are businesses, how many are commercial, how many are municipal. We asked for information on tanks, capacities, pump stations, capacities, and this is just a snapshot of some of the information. I know it's a little hard to see from where you're sitting, but of Marion's system. So we have in the report for each individual system there, the usage data, customer breakdown, water storage capacity, pump station capacities, a lot of information for every system in the county. As we worked through that and got a lot of information back from folks and started to compile it, what did we find? As a summary, the table in the upper right, collectively countywide, approximately 11,800 customers served within the county, based on the number of households therein, that represents about 80% of county's households are currently on public water. I was a little surprised at that in that when you look at the footprint of where the systems are at, there are a lot of areas of the county that, we saw new lines, but there are a lot of areas of the county that have low population, national forests, that kind of thing. But collectively, 11,800 customers within the county. During calendar year 2021, combined usage of all of those systems, about 4.7 million gallons of water a day. And during that same year, only a little less than 2.2 million gallons a day of water that's billed to customers. What that says is that collectively as a county, over half of the water that's being produced and sent out into the systems, less than half of that's making it through the meter to customers. So accountability and water loss was a major issue throughout the county systems.
Do you want us to hold the questions to the end or interrupt you as you go?
We do leave a spot for questions then, but I'd be glad to, as we go through, if we've got questions.
We have several customers and I know the town does too, who are just flat rate, we don't have a meter on it. Did you factor anything in for that type of thing?
Where we factored it in is it would show up in the total water production numbers and then, but they were a small percentage of the overall customer. So it may be appreciable, but in terms of the overall big picture, we didn't see it as such.
Thank you.
All right. And then there again at the bottom, breakdown of the water production and billings and percent accountability for each of those systems. Numbers were, you know, collectively at countywide as a whole, about 46% accountable. Wide range of numbers, I think the lowest accountability was about 26%, so only a fourth of the water being billed out to customers. And I will say from the county standpoint, collectively you had the highest accountability of any of the water service providers, so good deal for your staff.
Joking, it's a shame Mr. Stevenson isn't here.
I was hoping Phil was going to be here.
Laurie, do you have a question?
I did. May I ask you how the loans to county?
At risk of getting something thrown at me, town of Saltville. At 26.3%.
Probably the oldest.
Probably.
Did you factor in any, making difference on county? We buy a lot of our water from the town of Marion, for that matter. That just considered a sale by them and a purchase by us, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And then on this sheet, one of the things that we found also, as part of that, we asked each provider to give us information on their permitted source supplies. The county is shown at the top with the listing of your various systems at this point operating primarily as a purchase system. You've got the Watson Gap well and then the Hut Branch well and other than that, you're buying all of your water from other entities. Breakdown below there, town of Chilhawee with their permitted capacity and 2021 usage, town of Marion, Ry Valley, Saltville, and Thomas Bridge Water Corporation. And we've got the individual numbers for each of that. If you look over on the right hand side, percent of permitted capacity, Smith County operating at 108% of permitted source capacity, what that means is you're buying a lot of water from your neighbors. And going down the list there, the other entities, where that number becomes important, the health department who regulates the water systems in the state, once a system reaches an 80% of source capacity threshold, they reach a point there that the health department is supposed to step in and ask them to address how they're going to continue to have adequate supply or reduce water usage. And from the numbers there, you can see some of the folks are approaching that threshold. Town of Chilhawee was during calendar year 2021, based on the information that we provided, about 75% of their permitted capacity. Town of Marion, two large sources, the town spring and the water plant. The water plant showing a low usage number in that they're not running it, you know, a lot, they're getting a lot of their water from the spring and you may think, well, why are they able to show 113% of capacity in the spring? The spring capacity is set as a historic low output of that spring during the drought of record and that's where the 1.64 million gallons a day capacity for that spring comes at today and on normal operations, that spring's able to deliver a lot more water into the system. And, you know, there again, that's the way the towns operate. Ry Valley, Water Authority, they filter their springs, operating at about 67% of capacity. Town of Saltville approaching 75% of permitted capacity and Thomas Bridge Water Corporation just under 60% of capacity. County as a whole, permitted source supplies, about 8.4 million gallons a day of capacity. County as a whole, permitted source supplies, about 8.4 million gallons a day of capacity, 4.7 million gallons a day of water usage. So about 56% of permitted source capacity. But all of those sources aren't in places that are accessible to all the customers. One of the things that we touched on also is financials. What does the average water customer in the county pay based on where they live at? And we've got a table there of the rates. What we used, those numbers are based on a 3,000 gallon per month water customer. We saw countywide, based on the systems, I think the lowest was 2,600 and some gallons a day. Average usage, I think the highest was about 3,300. So middle of the road, about 3,000 gallons a month. Water bill, the county's rates in 2021 for that customer would be about $42 a month. And then you can see down the list how that would compare to the other systems. The three towns each operate with an in-town and out-of-town rate structure. The out-of-town rates are, I think in all three cases, double what the in-town rates are. So, you know, in terms of how does the county's water customer compare to other folks, shown to the table, you're about the middle of the road for the systems. The two tables on the right, 1% of median household income threshold and 1.5% of median household income threshold. Very quickly, two of the primary funders for water system improvements in our area are USD, DA, Rural Development, and Virginia Department of Health. And when they accept applications for projects and rank them and score them and make funding offerings to folks, in order to cross over the grant threshold or to be able to get considered for grant, they have a policy that they feel like the applicant needs to have water rates that are equivalent to these threshold numbers. Rural Development feels like 1.5% of median household income represents a paramount for folks to be paying for their water. Health Department says 1% of median household income. And from the tables, you can see how that compares. For Smith County, the average monthly water bill is about $42 a month. For Health Department funding, the 1% threshold, $34 a month. You're above that threshold. So if you had projects that you were successful in getting funding from the Health Department, you could be considered for grant funding for those. Rural Development, the 1.5% threshold, $51 a month. So a little bit under that threshold. But again, I think the county's rates are in pretty good position compared to those threshold. And you can see how your neighbors compare to that as well. One of the things Matthew hit on, and one of the biggest things that, time-consuming and a benefit to other folks going forward, is the mapping that we were able to compile. And this is just one example of it. Again, I apologize that it's a little hard to see from where you're sitting. But we had enlarged maps for each system. This is a map in Town of Saltville system, shows all of the lines in their system by size. Different colors represent different sizes of lines, tank locations, elevations, volumes, pump station locations and volumes. The black lines, as you see adjacent to there, those are neighboring systems. In this case, the county system of Allison Gap and then Pleasant Heights are shown on there. And we did that for every system throughout the county. So the back of this book is filled with page after page after page after page of maps. And that's very important. It gave us a better understanding of how each of the systems operate and their capabilities. But it's also very important from the county standpoint, or other consultants, or the entities that are represented here in the county, it gives them a tool going forward that it's a lot of work went into this. It's a lot of information there. It's going to keep folks from having to reinvent the wheel every time they're looking at extensions or expansions or improvements or interconnects or whatever going forward. So there is a ton of information in the report that's there. And we're proud of the fact that we were able to put that together and put it in a single document available for benefit. Matthew also touched on the fact that we put together a countywide hydraulic analysis or water model of the respective systems. When we started work, we had independent models of each one of the entities that we'd worked for. We'd worked for the county and other places. We'd worked for Chillhally or Marion or Ry Valley or Saltville. So we had some knowledge of their individual system. But by putting the countywide model together, we were able to see how the neighbors could interact. If we interconnected, how much water could we move from one system to the other? And another important thing is during the course of the study, I think fire flow availability became important. And one example, in one of our meetings that we came in when we talked about the model, I think Joe Kopenhafer from Thomas Bridge was here, and they had a need or a desire to put a hydrant there around the diner area where they did not have any fire protection. Just asked the question, can we do that? So we were able to put it into the model, be able to see what fire flow or predict what fire flow would be available without putting other customers in low-pressure situations. And ultimately, I think they did put that hydrant in. So that's, you know, just a small example of something that can be done with that. We also put together a list of, one of the things that we asked for feedback from all the providers was, what are your system needs? Do you have places that you want to extend to? Do you have lines that need to be replaced? Do you have, what are your needs? Based on that feedback, we developed a list of potential projects. That's not to say that it's all-inclusive or it touched on everything and every need out there, but it is a starting point for going forward. And we also put together some means of trying to see how those projects would rank or score compared to one another if all of those projects were to submit for funding at the same time. So what we did is we scored the project using the same criteria that the Health Department uses in their funding application. So there are some criteria based on health needs or compliance issues, affordability, and then discretionary criteria such as regionalization, readiness for seed, cost per connection, and other things. And we were able to use that to kind of rank those systems. So there are, I don't know the exact number there, but give or take about 15 or 20 projects that we've identified or needs throughout the county. On the left, the water service provider is named, the name of the project, how it would potentially score, or we feel it would potentially score if it were submitted for Health Department funding, and then a projected dollar amount for that project. So collectively, the needs that we identified and discussed in the study came up to a total of $108 million. And we're not here tonight to ask for all of that, but we can start on. Listing out the county's project as a whole, just the county only, in order of how we felt that they would score. And again, this may not mirror the same, what you feel is your priority and needs. But these are some projects that are potential projects that we identified. And then the cost that we established on the right is not a full in-depth PER cost, but it is a windshield snapshot of how we think one project would compare to another, at least in ballpark terms of cost. And the county's projects totaled up a little over 60% of that total at about $62 million. And for each one of those projects that are listed there in the report, if you choose to go back and look at them individually, we had a discussion of what was proposed. In this case, the Pathway Park well was developing that well to utilize as a county source of water supply. We tabulated the estimated construction cost in terms of how many feet of pipe it would take, pump stations and tanks to come up with that dollar amount that we plugged into the project. We put together a map for each one of those, showing where lines would be added, tanks, pump stations, and where that's at in relation to your system as well as other systems located And in the very end, we followed up with some very broad recommendations that I'll turn it over to Matthew.
Thank you. All right. So the recommendations. First, we believe that we ought to continue, at least annually, to meet with all of the water providers. We're to bring them all together, talk about what's going on in everybody's system, just keep the lines of communication open between us all. We're all part of Smith County. We're all serving Smith County residents. We all have the same thing in mind. We think it's important to keep that line of communication open, especially now that we've started. Because again, eventually, we believe that we're going to have to, we're going to have to come up with ways to work together. $108 million worth of projects is quite the undertaking. And I think it's going to take all of us to work together to get where we need to get. Water accountability is an urgent need for all of us. And really, Smith County is no different than any other county in southwest Virginia. We're all in the same boat here when it comes to that. We have older systems. The older the systems get, the more they deteriorate, the more they deteriorate, the more water loss you have. And eventually, it gets to the point that you can't just patch a line. You're going to have to replace it. And a lot of our lines are at that point now. We've just got to look at replacing some of this old infrastructure that we've got. But do remember, if one gallon of water that we save from leaking in the ground is one gallon of water that we don't have to produce and treat, it's also one gallon of water that we have more source capacity for. Developing sources and source capacity is very expensive. So getting a handle on our water accountability is very important. We believe the study should be submitted to VDH and RD, again, our two primary funding sources. When we get them to approve the study, then if any of the projects that we go after funding for later are actually mentioned in the study, it just gives us a leg up when it comes to getting the funding. So it's important that we submit that study, we believe, and get approval from both of those agencies. And lastly, we want to use this study. There's a lot of work that went into it. There's a lot of information in there. Now, we know what we didn't know before. We know where these potential projects are. We know what the needs are. We know what costs are associated with that. So the county really can use this as a tool to better plan for water systems, expansions, and maintenance in the future. And we hope you do. And Kevin and I and the group are happy to come to any committee meetings or anything else in the help going forward with that. It was a pleasure working with Sean and Clegg and the staff pulling all this together. It was a monumental task. And again, I think we're very proud of the finished product. So with that, I'll stop talking, and Kevin can answer any questions you have.
You can answer your question, man.
Oh, I do have my question, man. There you go.
I do have one. And somewhere rattling around in my brain, I remember hearing a statement made that if we were to have a disaster hit Smith County and take out one or more of the water facility producing sites, they would not qualify for FEMA remediation funds because the locations are too small. But if we were to somehow be able to join these multiple different entities under one umbrella, a disaster in one locality would trigger funding for the whole system to repair that through FEMA. Am I delusional, or did I really hear that somewhere?
No, I don't think so at all. It makes a lot of sense. I haven't heard that particular, but doesn't mean that it's not so. Anytime, regionalization and consolidation with any of the funding agencies, with VDH, that's what everybody's pushing right now. Because again, we're stronger when we're together. And that is obviously physically true of water systems, too. What Kevin mentioned is very true. We've got these independent-operating water systems, and we're pretty strong individually. But if something happens, if, you know, Lord forbid, we have a truck that turns over on the interstate, contaminates the river, and Thomas Bridge has to shut down their water treatment plant for days, you know, that could potentially be a pretty big disaster. Because there's not a lot of interconnects to get a lot of water back to where it needs to get. So one of the big things that we looked at in some of these projects were, how do we interconnect our systems together so that, you know, if Chillhally has an issue, we can get water back to them through Smith County lines from Marion, or vice versa. And we think that's very important. But no, I think you're probably spot on.
It seems like in my mind that it stems back to the tornado that came through Glade area that, again, maybe I dreamed this. But something happened with, I think it was the Thomas Bridge system that had a something break, you know, for lack of a better description. But because of the book of business they do, they didn't rise to the level of triggering the federal assistance.
Yeah, it makes sense.
But if they were in a joint portfolio with Chillhally, Marion, whomever, that joint portfolio would rise to the threshold to trigger federal funding to help them repair that one lone site.
Yeah, sure.
And that's where my thoughts were. And again, I don't know if I dreamed it or heard it somewhere.
It makes a lot of sense.
If you imagine, you know, Thomas Bridge has, what, 1,800 customers? And if they were in a PSA of a countywide, that's 15,000 or 11,000 customers, 11,000 customers is going to get a lot more attention than 1,800, for better or worse.
Right.
But yeah, I think that's exactly what should happen.
And I'm not trying to stir anything up here. I'm just trying to figure out a way to build in a natural insurance policy, if you will, to help us navigate a disaster of some sort that should it ever materialize. And I'll be quiet. Thank you.
Lori, you have a question?
Yes, sir. I just was curious if any of the other providers made any comments about their pushback as to why they would not want to partner together. Because I agree with your statement, stronger together, I'm all about that. And I'm just kind of disappointed to hear that none of them were interested in partnering together in this endeavor.
Yes. No, we didn't get any specific feedback. I don't know if Sean and Clegg got anything more than we did when we were talking to them. But the room kind of went quiet when we brought that up and started talking about it. And I'll agree with you. I mean, the Lang group worked with a lot of these individual systems. And I will tell you, just like I told them, I think it's something that we're going to have to start considering, especially the smaller systems. Because, you know, it's just going to get harder and harder for the smaller systems to maintain the service that they got to their customers. The regulations that VDH had are not going to get any easier to me.
Yeah, I'll add in that this study is actually helping us with a conversation just with what Mr. Lang's talking about with Ry Valley, Water Authority. And, you know, how can we help them? Some of their staff retired, so they have some turnover. So they do have some needs that we're going to try and offer. But if you think about, you know, and if I was in the town, put my town manager hat back on, the water and sewer, that's about as personal as you can get to a unit of government. And that's their primary connection to that citizen. So it's probably a point of pride that they don't want to give up that specific connection, physical connection, not necessarily water connection, but they're helping every citizen with the water department. Not everything that they do touches every citizen like a water or sewer department. So I would say that's probably a big reason why we didn't get a lot of interest to start with. Now, something happens and there's going to be a $10 billion fix. Now, something happens and there's going to be a ten billion dollar fix, that conversation might come back and they'd be a little more open to some partnerships, I'd expect.
And that's why we think we need to keep the lines of communication open. Because I don't think this is, I mean, there were a few hard no's, but, you know, I don't think anybody slammed the door for thinking about it in the future either.
That's a question I have. As far as the water loss, that seems pretty significant to me. And concerning in a lot of ways. I mean, and you're sitting here, you know, I've always thought that countywide PSA would be the way to go because there's just so many, like you say, connections that can be made. But just like some of the towns and stuff, when you throw those numbers out there for the water loss and the cost to bring it up to what it needs to be, it's hard for each individual town, or sometimes even the county, to go in and try to fund that. And I think just those power and numbers coming together, neighbors helping neighbors make this work. So I just, I don't know, and I just want to throw out there that I strongly urge the towns and us to all consider and continue talks and moving forward with that. Because I think at the end of the day, I mean, it's something that you have to provide.
Yes, sir.
And it's just going to get more expensive the longer it goes. So the quicker we can work on it, the better off we'll all be.
Yes, sir.
And thank you for the presentation, it was very informative.
Absolutely, thank you. Any more questions? We do truly appreciate the opportunity to serve the county and to work with you all, and thanks a lot, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
I do have a question that has nothing to do really with this water study. About the third slide up there, you showed that Blen County had a median income of fifty thousand. You know, a third of Blen County is in prison, they're incarcerated.
They don't count in the median household income.
Are they making that kind of money in prison?
Well, this, we did a, this is, we did a comprehensive sewer study for the entire southwest Virginia. Just finished that last year, too. And this is a table out of that study, and it is surprising. If you look, you know, Smith County is the, you're the third or the second most populous county in all of Mount Rogers PDC. You are also the second most, yeah, and lost the most population during that period of time, too. But if you look at that, not one county, not even Washington County, saw growth over that ten-year period. And these trends are expected to continue, maybe not as drastically as you said. I mean, some of the coalfields counties, they lost double digits as far as population goes. But again, going back to what we've all said here, that's why we're going to have to start looking for ways to work together. Nobody likes to talk about consolidation and that kind of thing, but we're going to have to start those conversations. We're going to have to. As a region, we're going to have to start looking at that because, like I said, we're losing population and our infrastructure's getting older.
Just for the record, I do like to talk about consolidation.
Well, one other economic thought is historically, all of our communities have grown up along water sources.
Yes, sir.
That's how they've all started.
Yep.
If we don't have a vibrant, sustainable water system, we're just asking to become extinct.
Yes, absolutely.
That's my philosophical rant.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jim.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it. Good presentation. We have no public hearing scheduled. Probably need to take, I hate to do this to the ones in the crowd, but probably need to take about a five-minute break. So let's be back in here at twenty after.
Yes, sir.
I made an attempt to contribute to your political campaign. Please don't laugh.
Don't worry, Chris, he's not saying mine yet. So yours will look like you're cheering all the time I get done.
I typed it.
I just, some changes are really bad.
Yeah, I've got my started, I'm not going to do it, I'll have to make it. Well, you probably could say it. Shouldn't say it. Sometimes the emails, they come out vicious again. And then I sit back and I edit, and I pull back, and I pull back, and I pull back, and I finally send the correct response. But if I was to send the first one that comes out, the first time, I probably still wouldn't be employed after all these years. When you have to send the same, when you have to send the same email to the same people about the same thing over and over and over, it just gets frustrating. I mean, that'd be like, well, that's it. But if you had to tell the same person, that this is the way you do the same medicine every time? Oh, I'm sure. My mother got a prescription as well, and it says, take one bottle twice a day. And it was, and she was, it was a, it was basically take one pill twice a day. And it was a, you know, three-month supply, whatever. She said, take one bottle twice a day. And I'm thinking, if somebody did, if somebody went, okay. No, I'm Jason Ridley. Sorry, my shirt right here comes back in, too. Well, and that's the thing, so Joe was at our board meeting last month, and he finally got mad at me a little bit. But I asked him, I said, because he was talking about, so you could down, so the water line puts across the Thomas Bridge, and it goes down the Casey's down, and then up. So it doesn't turn right, and Thomas Bridge gives no water line, it goes up and around and back down. And then when it gets, no, there's no, so everything goes to the left, Casey's down, and it'll leave the charge on the cross, and that down, rich on the edge. So when it goes over there, it's all the pump station down. So I asked you, I said, when you did this, Joe, I said, Joe, when you blew the fire riders, and he said, well, no. And I said, wow. And then he go, then I asked him, I said, so when we're replacing the line, are we replacing the line with the same sized line? Are we increasing the size for future expansion? At least, well, we'll replace it back to inch wide. And I said, that's it, why is it two inch back? Just to service that, and then he comes back a few minutes later, and he goes, well, I don't know. He tells me, they put in a grant, he doesn't know. He, I don't know. I don't know. It's just like the fire riders, that one you've heard, at Thomas, at the one that you put pressure at, blue or not. It's just bad. Well, it's not bad anymore, it's open, so it's there. But he said, he told me, he said, well, this thing's got six hundred gallons of water flowing. And I said, it has nothing to do with flow, I said, it flows in the rain, and it has to fill the tank. So I said, once the flow gets above the inlet, it has to push it in. And he looks at me and he goes, so you mean, you don't put something that pumps the water into your truck from the hydrant? And I said, you might know how fire riders should fish. Yeah, I said, you can have head pressure, and you can get a hundred and fifty pounds, but once you release a head pressure. He goes, we get six hundred gallons a minute. And I said, but if it's at two PSI?
If it's flowing downhill at six hundred gallons a minute, it's flooding.
But so, and his question to me was, do you want to put a pump in between the hydrant?
And suck it out of the hydrant?
You know, what does it do to your system if we suck water out of a pump? Yeah, it would create, but this is, so he's put Sue Telsa on the board, almost like a top six. She was also a principal.
I told him to go in there when starting up. We need you to have a backside.
I don't know. Ellis Rouse, he's the guy that took me.
I know, these guys, those like to get to the house, and these fellows like to get back on the road, they got a long way to go tonight. I made you a fair order, get that.
I made it that way, they're not setting you up. I can't remember the other one's name. I got aggravated when I went to one board meeting, and when I went to one of the, it was one up there. No, Cecil's not up there. One up was a wolf, one up was, was he a wolf? Or?
Let's go, folks. Ready, guys? Fire it up.
I'm going to take things a little out, I'm going to take things a little out of order right now. Laurie, are you back with us?
Yes, sir, I didn't go anywhere.
Okay, I'm going to take things a little out of order now, and go drop down to Citizens Time. And I've had one person sign up, Rose, with the library is here to give an update. So come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Okay, Rose Liken, eight twelve Chincopen Road in Marion. So just good evening, Ms. Chairman and members of the board. As the chairman said, I'm here to tell you all what's going on at the library lately, very quickly, because you've had a busy night already. The Board of Trustees will be meeting next week here in Marion on the nineteenth at five thirty in the main library in the Copenhagen Room. As always, we welcome everyone's participation. I have a little bit of good news to report. When the General Assembly amended the state budget about a month and a half ago, or a month ago, that resulted in an additional funding for public libraries, specially designated for public libraries. And so our annual grant from the Library of Virginia was increased by thirty-four thousand dollars. We, today, the Board Budget Committee approved how we're going to spend those funds, and we'll spend two-thirds of them on materials, and then another third will be on equipment and new computers. So that was a welcome little supplement. We won't get it every year, but it's nice to have it this year. Our school cooperation and collaboration is going strong. We are expanding the online library project out to Northwood Middle School. And so I've sent letters out to parents for Northwood Middle School to invite them to get online library cards. I mean, it's open to anybody, but the school, in fact, Heather Colley is the person who's leading that campaign for us to try and get some more online library cards out there. We will be doing a program with Marion Elementary School on the twenty-sixth with Title I families to try and issue library cards there. And I'll be going back to Chilhauie High School on November the sixth to do information literacy sessions with all of the ninth grade English classes to talk to them about how they can analyze websites, and then show them all of the resources that they can have through the library with their online cards. Our Holston Associated Library Consortium continues to be wildly successful. We are sending four to six big bins of materials out of our libraries to our partners every week, and we're getting back four to five bins from the other libraries coming to our patrons. And so everyone's really happy. Stuff that we have that other people wanted is clearly of interest. So that continues to be extremely successful for all of us. We are adding a new online resource to our subscriptions. We are going to add the craft and hobby database. And this will be a database that'll be free for everybody with a library card. They will be able to go online and see videos, get recipes. There are twenty different crafts and hobbies from woodworking, and quilting, and knitting, all kinds of different crafts and hobbies where people can watch the videos, they can get the templates, they can get the recipes. And so we'll be offering that. We're just doing the final computer connections, and we'll make that available, I hope, in the next two weeks to everybody in Smith County. And finally, on Wednesday, October the eighteenth, we'll be doing a staff development day for all of our staff. So all of our locations will be closed, but we will be able to get everybody together in one base, and we have an expert from the Library of Virginia come over for half a day. And so we'll spend some time together, and we've had several new employees, and so this will be a good opportunity to get everybody together. And with that, I would be happy to answer any of your questions.
I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank you for your professionalism, handling the situation of the concern citizens we have. This deal, this deal, and I would both like to thank and commend you for your efforts, sir.
Oh, you're very welcome, sir.
How's the Saltville facilities doing?
Well, the current building is in trouble. We've, we're working with the town of Saltville right now to try, we've got some moisture problems under there, and we're trying to, they filed for insurance, and the insurance guy came over and said, oh, it looks perfectly fine to me, so he doesn't want to pay to fix it. But we've got a mold problem, and so it's causing some allergic reactions for our staff. And so we can't really use, it's a small building, and a quarter of it is now off limits because the mold is pretty bad. So the town is working hard to help us try and find a solution. We have a solution. It's going to cost about fifteen thousand dollars, and so they're trying to figure out how to fund that. how to fund that, so.
How about the new facilities?
The new facilities, we, we're, we're really close. Um, the, he's finishing up his, his drawings. Um, they've done a lot of, the engineering company has done a lot of work on the site. Um, so we're, we're pretty close. We're at the point now where we just need a couple more meetings and then he'll be ready to come back and do a presentation for, for you all and for the community and show his ideas. But it, it's very exciting.
You, you didn't know you signed those around here, did you?
Well, I'm learning so much about water, I gotta tell you.
Thank you.
You're.
We determined the site was our pet up school. Is that where the final site?
Well, I, I probably shouldn't say since it's not all signed, sealed and delivered, but, but.
That's a good place.
We're, we, I think we're fortunate to have, have an excellent site that will help control the cost a little bit. It has its challenges, but it's not yet signed, sealed and delivered, so.
I'm sure I'll end up with a library card now. You got heavy on there. She won't let me catch my daughter. She won't let get by with anything.
I, I would just like to say real quick, thank you for taking your time and coming up here and keeping us up with everything that's going on.
I'm so welcome.
That's, uh, that's very appreciative.
Yes.
I know the staff at Saltville does great. I go by their quail. They do great.
They are, we're, everyone is really special, this is.
They will really excel in a better place. It'll be amazing. I can't wait to hopefully live to see it.
I don't know how many of y'all attended the addiction session that they did at the Lincoln Theater, the Emery and Henry, a couple weeks ago. And one of the things they talked about was the, the ten to twenty age group being the most critical for prevention. And so I sat there and listened to, you know, problems of addiction in southwest Virginia and the bio neurologist talking about, you know, brain development and if you, if you, the ten to twenty age group is the key age group. And if you can keep them away from it in that period, everything is just much better. And so I see this library in Saltville as a part of our prevention strategy for the county. In addition to offering the, the county a platform for taking services out to a part of the county where it's hard for people to travel. So it's an, it'll.
Any investment. Anytime the doors is open, they people in there. They, they're there.
We have the, we have the teens every Tuesday night and nothing else can happen because fifteen to seventeen teenagers take up the whole space. And people have gotten used to Tuesday afternoons. The teenagers are there and they're there for a couple hours and we have to show them out at six o'clock when we close the door, they, they don't want to go. So this is a good problem now. Now, we had thirty-nine for Legos in Marion at the end of September. This week we had nine middle schoolers for Teen Tuesday. Next week we'll have probably fifteen high schoolers for Teen Tuesday, so. This is why we do it. We love it and it, we know it matters and it's important.
Good job.
I think there's several positive that reflect their character and relationship and we all thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks for your support.
Appreciate it. Second place I want to jump to is a, we, uh, we have a planning commission recommendation. Uh, we, we need a motion to approve or decline special use permit for the battery energy facility for Laurel Creek Energy Storage LLC.
This is Claire. Did you want me to?
Yeah.
Give you that recommendation? Sure. Um, so after the joint public hearing last month, uh, the planning commission reconvened. Um, Mr. David Spence, uh, felt that the application met the standards, uh, that was referenced during the hearing, uh, and made a motion to recommend approval of the special use permit, which was seconded by Mr. Davidson. There was some conversation that followed that, um, and then Mr. Spence amended his motion to recommend approving the special use permit for the battery storage facility with the condition that the emergency plan be finalized and approved. Uh, in addition, he recommended allowing it to be valid for five years with the condition the applicant submit six month updates. The amended motion was seconded by Mr. Davidson and the following vote was recorded and that was six in favor, uh, and one member was absent. Um, and since that public hearing, uh, they have worked, uh, with Curtis Crawford, um, and have successfully, um, worked out the details for the emergency operations plan and, and there should have been a letter in the packet from Curtis approving that.
Yes. And I hate to do this to them, but I would, they're gonna be back here on the, on the twenty-sixth for a siding plan, am I not correct?
Yes, sir. So we have a public hearing scheduled for October the twenty-sixth for the siding agreement.
I would, I would like to see us postpone voting on this tonight and vote on the twenty-sixth and look at, and make sure we've got all our ducks in a row.
Okay.
But that's my, we got five other people here who's got their own opinion. I'm all ready to do it in a certain extent, but I'd sort of like to have a little more time on it.
Uh, my, my issue with it is, I, I just think if, uh, if everything's already met and they're, they're where they need to be at this point, the presentation, everything that's been provided by them, I, it's been exceptional, I think. I mean, I was, I was very, I think we were all impressed.
Yeah.
Um, and, and, you know, they, they've been here, I think, just about every meeting for, uh, the last few months, but that would, it, it would be my recommendation to, uh, to, uh, agree with the planning commission's recommendation on that, uh, if, if the rest see fit to do so.
I'm watching you. Do you, do you, uh, see any thing else that needs to be looked at on?
So to be honest, to answer that question honestly, there, there have been some observations made since the public hearing that, you know, we also have a special use permit going on for, for a solar facility. Um, and there were some concerns that were, that were brought up about that proposal. Um, and, and that's been tabled and that will be decided in November or at least come back up in November. Um, but to, to address some of those concerns, ultimately what is being proposed to you all is, is close to thirty-six conditions on that special use permit. And so the, the observation that was made was that, that some of those same conditions should probably be applicable to the battery storage facility. Um, and so anticipating that some of this may come up tonight, we actually had a very productive meeting, uh, with the folks from Laurel Creek today. Um, and, and if I say anything you disagree with, by all means come up here. But I would say that, that the bulk of those requirements, um, that they would be agreeable to. Uh, now there's some that obviously they're in those thirty-six conditions that are applicable to a solar facility, but not a battery storage facility. Uh, and that was a lot of today's conversation and, and ultimately we would recommend that those be removed. Um, so if, if any of you, I guess I'll summarize it by saying this, if, if any of you had concerns with the solar facility and you think any of those could translate over to the battery storage facility, the only way to resolve those is through conditions on the special use permit. Um, and sure, if you want to come up and address that.
I'd love to just respond real quick. I appreciate, yeah, we did have a productive meeting earlier today. Let me just introduce myself again real quick. Rex Young, I'm a senior permitting manager at Plus Power. Um, I know you've, I know you've got the whole pack, seen our whole packet of our application. Uh, just to address this quickly, um, there's a couple reasons. We, you know, I respectfully agree to disagree, I think, on a few of the, um, conditions we're talking about here. And the reason being, we're just a very distinctly different use than a multi-hundred, potentially hundred acre solar project. I really think the, sort of where the similarities end is that we both connect to the electric grid. Um, I'm familiar with solar, I've worked in it before and I, um, know what, you know, I, I'm keenly aware of the, the differences there, which are, you know, you're talking about completely different equipment, right? Panels, racking frames that are going to take up hundreds of acres. I think you've got one, I know you've got one in front of you that's maybe seventy acres for like ten megawatts and we're a, we're just completely different. We're fifteen acres, we've got two hundred and fifty megawatts of electricity, um, being ch, uh, being, uh, made available for the grid. And, um, I just, uh, we're just a completely different, different use. I'd also, um, add that we have, you know, designed the app, the application and the project already to meet what your code currently says. Um, you know, you all went through a big process here and, um, amended your code to add battery storage regulations and those are the ones we designed our project around. Um, those are your district regulations, your battery storage specific regulations, all the special use regulations. Um, we did get a unanimous recommendation from the planning board already and, um, we don't know of any public concerns or opposition to this project. And, um, you know, I think we would, we, we want to get on to the siding agreement on the twenty-sixth and to do that, we'd like to have certainty about where we are here on the special use permit. Now, it's not a, you know, line in the sand or anything, it's not gonna, you know, it's not impossible to do this out on twenty-sixth, but we would really love, we really appreciate, um, and respectfully request the approval of the application we've put in front of you with your current code as is, um, right now. But we're happy to, you know, continue to meet with the county. Um, also with me tonight is our director of development, Fernando de Simoniego Stata, who could add maybe a little bit more to, um, uh, to that.
Thank you, Rex. Uh, yeah, very nice to meet you. We met with some of you before and thank you for the time. As I mentioned, my name is Fernando de Simoniego. And just to add on, on the, doing it jointly, um, approving the special use permit and the siding agreement, we've talked with Claire about the fact that we're thinking about the siding agreement and Claire, you correct me if I'm wrong, as more of a monetary, um, kind of agreement between the county and the project. While the special use permit is not more about conditions the project will have, for us, it's always been important to get the special use permit done before. In that sense, to understand what conditions we're gonna get, so then to know what we can commit from a monetary perspective, right? I think my issue of approving both at the same time is that if next hearing by any, if we talk about any new conditions that have, you know, any, any implications, monetary implications on us, it's gonna be hard for us to also commit to something on that same hearing for the signing agreement. So, I mean, from our perspective, it would be better just to separate them just from a hearing perspective, to make sure that we discuss the conditions on the special use permit that, that you want to see, that I think, as Claire said, that we're amenable, we don't look like solar, as Rex said, like, from our perspective, solar is a, a lot of land use. You know, structurally, you have panels that are gonna need foundations that are bigger because panels, you know, they need to be, like, the wind can move them. Like, these are like ninety thousand pound steel boxes that are put on concrete pads. I mean, of course, they don't move, but the foundations are also pretty light because the, the steel containers, like, they're super heavy. So in that sense, we look very, very, very different. Um, we're concerned, you have concerns with the solar. For us, and we've told you that before, we really look more like the thirty acre substation that you have right there. That is really, uh, how we look like. I mean, we have containers, of course, but it is, uh, we see ourselves, or this project as a completely different use case. And, I mean, we, we're appreciative we can get the, the approval today so we can then work on the siding agreement with the county and make sure we, we get that agreement. And if not, I mean, we work with the county. If you prefer to, uh, work on another time, we can also, uh, work it through. I think that's my only request is if we can do that separation between those two bits of the monetary implications.
Right. I'm with Mr. Wyder. I think your presentation that you've made, you anticipated and answered all our questions. Uh, you know, you, y'all made a fantastic, we're new at this. And, uh, we're, we're learning as we go along and, uh, I think we all came here tonight thinking we'd pass this and move on and then you got the discussions and, uh, I don't know, I don't know what we're gonna do yet. I get mercy of the rest of this group as to how we want to handle this.
I, I, I just want to be clear, I, I haven't made a motion on that. I, I, I still, I want discussion on this just to see, um, where, where we are. Um, and, and I guess my, my biggest question really is, is there something that even if we was to go ahead and, and approve this, is it something that could be worded to include whatever's supposed to be?
When you give the approval, you're gonna lose any control you have. So when you give that approval, you need to give the conditions you want them to meet when you give the approval. If you give a carte blanche approval, as the planning commission recommended, there's no conditions on that.
Two small ones.
Or two small ones, yeah.
Under ordinance.
And the conditions of the ordinance?
Yes.
A lot of the, um, you know, I think the origins of the, of the conditions we're talking about, right, come from maybe another county that's dealt with over a dozen, eighteen or so, larger solar facilities that are, you know, very land intensive, not what, not all what we're, uh, proposing. And a little bit of, um, my last job, I'm a little bit familiar with how all those conditions came about over there, um, just because the county, I think, that, that region of the state was getting a little bit fatigued with the, the, a lot of big applications coming in. And, um, I think they were trying to deal with, you know, that volume and they're also getting a lot of, um, citizen complaints about projects and, uh, about solar projects and citizen concerns. A lot of people showing up angry at meetings, wanting to oppose them and, you know, that's just, um, and it's a whole different set of concerns and I, and a lot of the, a lot of those conditions are kind of just, um, sort of feel, I, I would, I would say they're sort of repetition of things that might already be in the ordinance. In that case, things that were already in the solar ordinance and a lot of it, I'd say a lot of that is, you know, the same case here. You did go through that process with, with putting an ordinance into place. And, um, I appreciate that you, um, you know, enjoyed, liked our presentation we put together. We tried to tailor that package to meet the, you know, the ordinance we were, um, we were dealing with at the time. And, um, that was, that was part of our objective to make sure we gave you an application that met and addressed all, all those known standards.
I've got one thought while they ponder that. Refresh me on if some, one of those units was failed. I worked electricity all my life from coal mines to structure. Electricity does fail sometimes, units will. What is the, uh, program on disposing of that? Is, is it capable of being put in landfill or is it something that has to be handled differently?
So it is, um, so we're using an American-made Tesla Megapack two. And Tesla, if, if there's anything wrong with the, with the Megapack, they will actually, they have an acceptance program that they'll take it back. If not, you'd put it in a license, a specially licensed landfill. But this stuff has aftermarket value. I mean, they, you know, I could tell you that Tesla takes it back out of the kindness of their heart, but they also, I'd say they, I can't speak for them, but it's a, it's a, I'm, we're glad they have the program, but there's, you know, valuable salvage value is the point I'm trying to make, there's salvage value in the, in that, in those materials and there'll be a, there'll be an aftermarket value for it, it's probably.
So the county won't have to worry about amending up their land.
That's right. In fact, our, a decommissioning plan we did include in the application specifically says there's, uh, that none of it is to be disposed of in Smith County.
Thank you, Mark.
Yes, sir.
Courtney, you had a motion, correct?
No, I, I did not make a motion. I was just, you know, and I, I would probably recommend, I guess it couldn't be much, I don't know. Depending on how that's worded, but, uh. I guess just, right now, I don't know what that is. What, what is these other things?
All right. So if we go back to the, to the solar discussion, okay? Um, we had Scott Simpson come in, um, and he addressed you all on some of the hurdles that they had, you know, encountered in Halifax County. Um, and it seemed to me that a lot of that resonated. Um, there were issues, for example, of change of ownership. So, um, you know, one of the concerns that was voiced is what happens if they get this thing built and then they sell it, okay? So one of the requirements, one of the thirty-six requirements that you see in the, in the proposed, um, special use permit for the solar facility is that if they were to change ownership, that the next owner has to come in and agree and sign a document that they agree to all the terms of the special use permit, okay? Um, others are, I would agree, are a bit redundant in the sense that it reinforces that they have to comply with the N S laws and stormwater laws and V dot laws. There's, there's a mechanism in there that if they tear the road up, they have to fix it. That's not one of the, that's not in the current ordinance, and that would be a condition of the special use permit, if that is a concern. And I'm going through the thirty-six items in my head, but those are, that's just a snapshot of what those thirty-six requirements are. Now, for the solar facility, of course, one of the biggest concerns that was voiced was with the solar, not with the battery, but with the solar, was potential contamination of soil and water total. So one of the requirements that Halifax County puts in there as a condition of the special use permit is that they put in monitoring wells and they do soil samples, and then they test that on a routine basis after the fact to make sure that that is not, that use is not impacting either the soil or the water. You know, now they, part of the conversation today was that there is a difference obviously between solar and battery facilities in the sense that their batteries are gonna be stored in these steel containers and not exposed to the elements. So it's really geared more towards the other requirements, you know? Do you want checks and balances if ownership changes? Performance bond, one of the issues that Scott mentioned when he was here is that they had problems, or they had had problems with developers following through on the conditions. And so through a condition of the special use permit, they required a bond, a third bond. You know, you have the ENS bond that's required for the land disturbing measures, you have the decommissioning bond that's required, but they, through a condition of the special use permit, require a third bond that guarantees that they're going to follow through on all those conditions. So if they don't put in their screening, if they don't build the road to standards, then they cash that bond in and they finish that. So that's an element that's not in our ordinance, but is handled, at least through Halifax County, as a condition of the special use permit. If none of those elements are of concern with this application, then you're right, there's no need to put any additional requirements on them.
Would that have to go back to the committee, or could it just be a recommendation?
No, it's no different than the way the solar application, you know? If you remember, the Planning Commission made a recommendation, and then the concerns that were voiced, and then Scott made his presentation, and with them, we're at, here's the thirty-six proposed conditions.
We got anything in there, you may have just hit on it, I'm not sure, where if they don't do something like in priment or something like that, they have to get it fixed, they can't just pay a fine and keep running on going, right?
Well, I mean, it would be, if it wasn't handled as a condition of special use permit, there's still the enforcement action to the design ordinance, yeah. And whatever other applicable regulations, whether it's land disturbing or anything, there's still the enforcement side of it.
Yeah, that's right. Do you mind, Clegg?
Yeah, yeah.
I do wanna add, it's not, to that final point, which is what I was just about to ask to say anyway, you know, we're, there is, there's always the enforcement side, right? You can find us noncompliant, and then, you know, we'd have, I assume it's a penalty, it's almost, I don't know the structure of your county penalties system, but, you know, we would be fined, and not just fined to go on, but it would be recurring until we take corrective action, and we'd probably get what issue to notice violation, or, and that's true not only here at the county level, we'll be in compliance with the EQ regulations and every other agency involved as well, so this is not, you know, there is a accountability measure baked into the way this approval would work, and it won't be, you know, this is not the last time that you'll have, that there's an opportunity to ensure compliance. And I would just, certainly taking a step back, you know, a couple of the conditions Clegg mentioned there, you know, we don't have a problem with repairing roads, if they're, we don't have a problem with letting you know if there's a change in ownership. We, so those would not be problematic, some of them, you know, Clegg gave a great example on the soil side, that's the kind of thing, we just really don't feel like, you know, since we're not hundreds of acres of, taking up hundreds of acres of potentially agricultural land or something like that, that's, you know, an example of one we agree is just not, not applicable to what we're proposing here on fifteen acres.
I honestly, I honestly think we're all, we're all really convinced that this is what we want, the problem is, it's our job to protect the county also, and we're between a rock and a hard place, do we go ahead and just give you, I don't like saying it this way, I don't mean it this way, do we give you point blank, you know, you can do what you want to, other than what's in our regulation, or do we wanna add a few of these stipulations? And that's where we're at, I think. At least, I think that's where we're at.
I think it sort of cleared it up for me, that last statement you just made, that, yes, there is some things you agree with, and I agree that these things may need to be added and looked at, but there are also things that may not necessarily apply to your facility, so, you know, like the chairman said, we wanna make sure that we do it right. I don't have a question in my mind, you know, as far as how I feel about this, I, you know, but we do need to make sure, and we owe it, we do owe it to the citizens to make sure we're doing everything the right way. And it's not that I have a change of heart or anything, it's just that, you know, we do wanna make sure we do the right things, but I needed to know what those things were. Now I have a little bit of better understanding of it to move forward with that. With that, with that being the case, I would like to make that motion to table, that we can get these things working with them, to get these things taken care of by the next...
By the twenty-sixth?
Yes, by the twenty-sixth, with those recommendations in place.
Yeah, I'm with the Greens, Courtney, and you guys have been awesome. You all have come in, you have, there's no telling how many air miles you all have logged getting in here. I've been impressed with every presentation you all have given, and I do wanna get it right, and if we can get all this ready by the twenty-sixth, you think?
Yes, sir.
And I apologize for the fact that we did this to you.
Sorry, we understand your duty to...
Well, we're new at this. We're new then.
Well, I sympathize with them too.
Oh, I do too.
They, I mean, I wouldn't wanna go on with another phase of the job without having a first phase approved, don't we? I mean, I agree with that.
And I think to that point, if the conditions are what we discussed, we're happy then to talk through the signing agreement, we can get that also done. I think, I was just talking through, if there's something, you know, out of the left field that is like, well, now you need to pay for something, I don't know, that we haven't contemplated.
I don't speak for the board, I don't think you're gonna see us throw anything out of that field. What you've already discussed with Clegg is what we're probably looking at and putting right in. At least I think it would be, I'd be safe to say that.
And then we'll be ready to discuss the signing agreement, no problem, during that hearing as well.
And I do apologize again, when we go doing this, if we do vote to table it, I don't have a second yet. If we do vote to table it, I do apologize.
And I'm extremely excited for this project, and extremely excited for a lot of reasons, and I will go ahead and say with the motion, and I'm glad you all are aboard, and like I said, we'll get it right, hopefully.
Yep, sir.
Thank you.
All right.
We have any other discussion? All those in favor of tabling, all those agreeing to table this? Lauren, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, does Halifax County have a battery storage facility?
No, no, but I will share with you some comments that I received from Scott today.
Okay, but, and I'm all appreciative of our input from Halifax County, and I don't wanna compare apples to oranges, I don't wanna compare apples to apples, so can we identify another county who actually has a battery storage facility that maybe we can speak to?
Yeah. That we know of. So the only one that I know of is Chesapeake City, and actually, it was allowed by Rife through their zoning ordinance, so there was no opportunity for that jurisdiction to put conditions on any permit. They actually added them to the signing agreement.
Okay.
So, yeah, there really is, there is no blueprint to this. We're in uncharted waters.
So, for probably the first time in the Commonwealth's history, Smith County is setting the precedent for others to follow, so I agree with everybody else, I wanna make sure we do this right.
That's right.
And for the company, I wanna make sure we do this right, because I'm very appreciative of their presentation, and I really feel like they have all their ducks in a row, and I'm excited about this project, but I wanna do it right for them and us and our citizens.
And that way, when they apply for their next one in some other county, we can give them some good marks and say, hey, they're great to work with.
Exactly, and we can say, here's what you should do when you're ordering.
Okay. Any other discussion? And I apologize again, but all those in favor of postponing, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
I mean, I'm just gonna stand after.
I'm gonna disagree one time. Okay, that's fine. That's fine.
Y'all out there one time a year.
No, I just wanted a real... Is that even Chesapeake, Virginia, is where, what other one's that?
Sorry?
Chesapeake, Virginia?
Yeah, that's right. Chesapeake City.
Y'all ever been up there?
Yes, yeah, that's...
It's their facility.
We go into Tesla Museum.
I know.
They want us up there, right out to Virginia Beach off Atlanta.
Yeah, yeah.
Very impressive place.
All right. I, again, just wanted to thank you all for coming and being so committed to this and working with us through everything. I don't mean to just be backfired, but I wanna make sure that, like I said, at the end of the day, that we're doing the right things for the citizens and you guys too, so it's an learning process. And now that I understand what it is, it helps me so, it's, you know, just to be honest with you, when I first heard about this, I was like, what in the world is this? You know, I just, so I've learned a lot through this whole process, and by us doing this, it's only gonna benefit you guys in the end, and that's, that's for, probably for years to come, so.
We don't want you all to feel like we're bringing you something that you haven't fully invented either, so we, you know, we want you all to be confident that we're bringing something that, you know, you're proud of having in Smith County, and we feel like we can deliver that product, and we don't, we're not, it's no problem at all, I appreciate the apologies, but we work well with Clegg, and we're happy to continue to, you know, hammer these out over the next couple of weeks, and we're gonna be here, as you said, anyway, for the signing agreement, so we'll continue diligently working on it and make sure it's, you know, a thorough set of conditions that meet your needs.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
Right, and some frequent flyer miles.
That's right. Well, it's about, I'm driving from North Carolina, so I don't get it, but they do.
Well, I pushed you up in the agenda so you could get out of here, so.
Thank you all, everyone, we appreciate it.
Might save you a half hour, so, thank you all again for presentations.
Thank you.
Now, going back up to our minutes of the previous meetings. Any corrections?
Move to proof.
Motion to second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I guess the motion carries, I guess I need to go back in citizens' time, we heard it, Rose gave such a good presentation, I didn't ask anyone else, they wanted to participate in citizens' time, do either one of the other spectators wish to say anything?
Let's go along.
If not, I'll close citizens' time.
First time I've heard that.
You'd like to say that, wouldn't you?
All right, financial status report, Lisa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under the, I believe it's the orange tab there in your packet, you will have the financial reports from the Treasurer's Office, which includes the county expenses and appropriations through September thirty, twenty twenty-three. It reflects a bank's CD balance ending September of fourteen million eight hundred seventy thousand seven hundred thirty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents. And that's a, down just, down just a little over two million from last year, but that change is related to some special projects funded by the money provided to our budget through the ARPA funding. In addition to that information, you have the tax information provided by the Treasurer's Office on the next page, and then the Treasurer's Accountability Report. Also included in that packet is the expenditure summary and revenue summary through September as well. That's all I have.
Motion to, do I have a motion to accept this report?
No, move.
Have a motion to second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Motion carrying. I guess I need a motion to approve paying of the invoices and accounts payable.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to second, any discussion? And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Motion's announced. Moving on to old business, Budget Committee, Sean will read it there.
Okay, just, I'll be very brief, the Budget Committee had a meeting on October fifth, we had two items of discussion. The first item was a summary of the second quarter appropriation requests, and you have the, there on page fifty-six, you see the list. The total appropriation request would be twenty-seven million six hundred seventy-three thousand two hundred ninety dollars. Following discussion of the committee, a motion was made by Chilhauie Supervisor, Mr. Sturgill, to recommend approving the requested second quarter appropriations in a total amount of twenty-seven six seventy-three two ninety, as presented. It was seconded by Ms. Deal and passed unanimously as a committee recommendation.
Any discussion? Are you done? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sounds like it was unanimous.
Okay, and the next item that we discussed, that the committee reviewed a memo from Ms. Hayden regarding some interest funds that had been earned from COF grants that were held in CDs for the last couple of years, Smith County machines, space site, and Cholli expansions. In total, there was about twenty-seven thousand eighty dollars earned in interest funds. The request was to transfer or to make a check payable to the EDA for those funds to be used in recruitment, marketing, and expansion activities. Following discussion, Mr. Sturgill made a motion to approve the request, and Ms. Deal seconded the motion, and it was unanimously approved committee recommendation.
Okay, committee recommendation, all those, any discussion? Everyone's clear what happened there? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed likewise? Sounds like it was unanimous.
And that's all we have for Budget Committee.
No budget amendments?
Give us time, give us time.
He didn't hear me. All right, moving on to Park and Recreation Committee, Mr. Sturgill.
Building and grounds.
What?
Oh, that's my question. Am I making a mistake?
Should be buildings and grounds.
She meant building and grounds.
I don't know what she meant, I just know what she typed.
I got building and grounds.
I want to prove to the world that it says Park and Recreation Committee.
Chee-chee.
Okay, moving on to, I don't even have buildings and ground.
You're gonna have to quit doing that.
All right, we'll move to Buildings and Grounds Committee then.
You want me to do it?
Yes.
Okay. I called the meeting to order at ten AM and opened the floor for discussions. Let me just say, there were several people present, Ms. Deal, Chris Ratliff, myself, County Administrator Sean Ut, Lisa Richardson, Clegg Williams, Dennis Skrier, Alan Alavien, also Dr. Carter, who's present, as were some members of Smith County School Board's Facilities Committee. Mr. Ut provided two committees with some background information on the county's building use study and recommendations, which could result in overall investment of nearly twenty million dollars in the coming years. He noted that he and Dr. Carter had spoken several times about building needs within the school system, most notably the Marion Intermediate School and at Cholli High School. Dr. Carter presented the ideas regarding those two schools. For Marion Intermediate, he presented three options, option one was demolish both wings and retain the center gymnasium, option two would be demolish the wing closest to the senior high school and retain the gym and remaining wing, which could be used for storage, and option three was fully demolish the entire structure and build a standalone gymnasium and supporting areas. He noted for Cholli High School was in dire need of additional areas for the expanded cafeteria seating, noting that roughly seven hundred students are fed daily between the middle school and the high school, a larger van room due to robust program, and additional gymnasium similar to Northwood High School. Committees discussed financing options. Mr. Ut reported that he and Mrs. Richardson were planning a conference call with the county's financial consultants in the near future, and these project needs would be one of the topics for discussion. With no further business to discuss, the meeting adjourned at ten fifty-four AM.
Okay, we have nothing to vote on, no motions required, just, if you're not clear on what we talked about and need additional information, see Mr. Sturgill.
Can I ask one question on that real quick? So with those, with those three options, who makes the decision on that? Would that be the school board, or would that be the building and grounds, or both?
Both.
I think it would be a conjunction with each other.
Yeah, and, you know, I'll just tell you, one concern of trying to keep part of the present building is because you're gonna have to constantly keep coming back and fixing, you know?
And can you demo it? And can you demo it without disturbing the rest of, can you save it and demo half of it? I think that was one of the concerns, because I just wondered if it, and I don't mean to continue on. I just wonder if it wouldn't be cheaper just to, it actually.
Remove everything and just build.
That was actually a consensus of the committees.
When you look at all the options, I mean, it's cheap.
If you're going to spend money, you might as well do it right. I mean, and that's, you know, that's going to benefit so many people.
Well, I think it was the cheapest option.
I think it was, to be honest with you.
My thought on it, and I sit in on the committee, although I wasn't on it, I'm a spectator. The thing we got to do, or one thing that committee has got to do, is sell this to the public. I think some people are wanting to save the school no matter what. We need to get the information out there and let the public know these numbers and see why it's better off to destroy the whole thing and start. And have a new building and not a remodeled building that's forty-five or fifty years old.
Well, yeah, and I just think too, again, I don't want to continue on, but, you know, multi-purpose building, I mean, I think there's so much.
That's kind of, that's what's.
Possibility there, so, okay, I'll stop.
And I think I've spoken more about Chilhauie High School, so I think everybody understands some needs there. Anybody have a question there?
That's a need that's been there for a long time.
All right, thank you.
All right, moving on now to plan the commission recommendations we need. Also, I need a motion to, we skirted around it, but we didn't get the motion for the site, public hearing on the siding for the battery energy facilities. So I need a motion on that.
It's moved.
Second.
Have a motion to second to hold that public hearing on the 26th sometime during the meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sounds like it was unanimous. We got a couple of, no action needed. 10:13 Ridge Road update.
So, a bit of good news on that one. We have been working with the property owner for the last couple of weeks. He has now submitted a bond for fifty thousand dollars, paid for his permits, and we're waiting for one piece of information from his contractor. And we will be able to issue the second final permit, and hopefully that project will come to a resolution in the very near future. So with that, you can either vote to take it off of old business, or if you would like one final report, once that permit's issued, I'd be happy to do that.
Let's leave it on there if anybody else agrees, shake it by the shake of the head. That way it doesn't get easy enough for English. It doesn't get lost in translation. Moving on now to a rehab building ownership transfer. I guess we got a resolution for that.
Yes, sir. So if you turn over to the orange, the backside of the orange tab, there's a draft resolution that Mr. Farling has prepared. This will be the final action necessary to actually take ownership of the rehab building, the building we toured here at four o'clock, the location for the Appalachian Center for Hope. The Attorney General's Office is still working out the deeds, the final agreements and such, but we do need to go ahead and have this on hand. And the goal, or I don't know that it'll happen, but it'll be nice to be able to close on this before our next meeting. But this resolution authorize, basically gives me and the county attorney the authorization to do whatever is necessary to take ownership.
This is a donation by the state of Virginia, so there's no, we're not paying for this. You know, and it's just getting the documents finalized with conditions and terms, with easements and everything going on between these buildings. Making sure we have all the things we need, which I think we do. We have a parking lot issue we're trying to figure out in some language of the deed right now. So we're waiting to hear back from the Attorney General's Office on, I guess, the next, where they stand on those conditions at the moment, so.
He's going to be down here next Friday, so if you don't get.
Tomorrow.
He's going to be here tomorrow.
Care to bring with you.
We're hoping.
It's what we're hoping to do, but we can't do that, so.
I'll move to proof.
Okay, have a motion to approve. And a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sounds like it was unanimous. I actually voted for it, except to give him his sake. All right, we're moving along now. Report from the county attorney.
I don't have anything to report at this time.
I told you we should have a long. Report from the county administrative staff.
I can't get away without speaking a little bit more. In your yellow tab, in front of the yellow tab, there's a few items. One of them is a request or invitation from the Cooperative Extension. The director, the statewide director, Dr. Mike Gutter, is going to be in town in Abingdon on November 3rd at 10:30. And Mr. Overbay asked that we invite the board to, if you're interested and available, to come and attend. And you've got a little summary there. The next item that I have in that tab is the quarterly report for the Smith Grove, the housing program that the PDC is putting forward. They have the first contract signed, so hopefully construction will begin here soon on either three or four houses that was under that contract. So I just wanted to get you that. And then finally, Ms. Lethian reminded me that with Parks and Recreation Committee meeting, that is scheduled for next week, and you'll have a report at the 24th, 26th. She can keep that on the cheat sheet. We do have some really good participation numbers coming from the towns that we were hoping for. So we should, we're hoping for a good, open conversation with the towns and other agencies or organizations. So we don't want it to look like we're stepping on toes and trying to take things over. We're just trying to supplement what's already out there.
We have, have we set a time for that meeting yet?
10:00.
10:00 a.m.
It's going to be 10:00?
Yes, sir.
I know I invited a couple of athletic directors.
Be good.
Just to come in, give them a perspective. That's next Thursday, right?
Yes, sir. And that's all I have.
I need to advise you, I cannot physically be here for that meeting. I think I'm chairman of that, but I cannot be there. We've got, I've got a work conflict. I have to be in the building at work. Unless something changes, I won't be present for that.
Virtual be an option? To at least listen in?
I can try to listen, but in my world of chaos there, probably not going to happen. Sorry, we got a flu clinic scheduled that day at that morning, and I'll be the only one on the bench.
That's all I have.
All righty, Supervisor Committee, Mr. Sturgill here first.
I'm going to be brief tonight. First of all, I would like to say, like I'm. Last Friday, we started the healthcare excellence program. The students who got accepted into new form lab school, we have thirteen in Smith County, and they went to Smith County Community Hospital. They went through several different departments over there to see what they do. These are thirteen students who are looking to go into some form of healthcare, whether it be physical therapy, dentistry, optometrist, physician, physician's assistant, nursing. We're trying to give them an overview of all as many of the different medical fields as we possibly can, even veterinary science. So that was our first one. Tomorrow, they will be going, they go, we have six straight Fridays. Tomorrow, they will be attending Virginia Highlands Community College and visiting their sim lab down there, where they simulate a lot of different things in the medical field, procedures and operations. So I look forward to that. It'll be a great day. So we're working, we've had a lot of people that are volunteering their time for students to sort of get a different perspective, not just see what you see when you go into the doctor's office, but kind of see a little bit behind the scenes. So hopefully these people will continue in the healthcare and come back to our county and practice. Second thing I'd like to say is I would like to give a big thank you to our two board members who are veterans, Charlie, Courtney. You know, we wouldn't have the great country we live in without our veterans. And, you know, I guess I'm fortunate that I never had to serve in the military, but I thank you all for your sacrifice from the bottom of my heart for what you've done for our country. And I've told many people, we have our faults, but I still would not want to live anywhere else in the world. Thank you all. Thank you.
Mr. White.
You're not last, Mr. Stone.
I haven't had time to think about what I was going to say now. I used to go last, so I just, I really want to point out a couple of things that happened earlier when everybody was here. The Sheriff's Office accreditation, that was, that's a pretty monumental thing for this county and for that office. Nobody truly understands the work that was put into getting to where they are. And it took everyone coming together as a whole. You know, it's not just the sheriff, it's not just one of the deputies, I mean, it's everybody. So, you know, to see everybody work at that and, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't easy at all. There was, there was times that I know people were working hours and hours just to try to get certain things to where it needed to be and make sure. Even though, you know, it could have been in compliance. They've done things to ensure that, you know, everything was perfect. And to see the dedication, the work that the men and women at the office have put in, you know, they deserve all the credit in the world. And I'm really appreciative of everything that they was able to accomplish. And receiving that tonight in front of most of the department, a lot couldn't be here, but that is just a big deal to everyone that was involved in that. And also, Ms. Bogle, who was here receiving the historical award, you know, that just goes to show you how important that EMD is that's been implemented into the 911 system. You know, we jumped in headfirst on that, and the ones on the public safety committee are well aware, you know, and how that's went down over recent years as far as trying to get all these people trained. And up until the state set a mandate that, hey, we've got to be at least doing this CPR. Well, it was decided, we're not just going to do that, we're going to go full EMD. We're just going to go ahead and implement. It's going to get that way anyways. And it was all hands on deck, and it was tough, but them dispatchers, they pushed through and, you know, there's a huge learning curve there. There's more things that have to take place. And what they was able to, what they was able to do and get to where they are today without the group that they had there, I don't know that it could have been done with anyone else the way they worked through that. But it's a great team, they're doing great things, and we're going to hear nothing but more good things out of that group, and I look forward to that. And I also thank our veterans and our military service members that unfortunately may not be here with us any longer and also serving overseas and abroad and stuff. And, you know, it's not just them, we just need to keep their families and everybody in our thoughts and prayers. We're in tough times, and it's getting tougher, we can see every day, you know, just turning on the news. It's, I hope it's not too, to the point where we're going to have to get involved in another. But, you know, with everything going on, it looks more or less that way unfortunately. But I know we've got men and women ready to stand and do what they got to do in any given nervous. But I'll leave it at that. Thank you, guys, for all y'all do, and thanks to the staff for everything you guys do. You're amazing. Solid rock, sir.
Go say it. Mr. Ratliff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a little bit of business I need to conduct if I can. For the staff, I had a conversation today from a staff member of Pat Conklin out at Heatherwood Counseling Service on Old Wilderness Road. About four years ago, thereabouts, she asked about a caution children playing sign to be put up near her counseling center. Apparently, there's kids that get in and out of the car and they, that highway there, that road is rather quick. It's Old Wilderness Road, if you're going to Hundred Mother Park and on Highway 16, as you come down the hill, the road will turn back upright.
Mitchell Valley Road.
Did I say, excuse me, wrong road, Mitchell Valley Road, thank you, I'm sorry. Okay, I was going from memory because I didn't get here with my notes from the store.
Outward movement.
Yes. So her ask is, they had had two signs put up about four years ago. Somebody has liberated one of them, and they would like to have it replaced. So I don't know if that's a state supplied thing or a county supplied thing. She said specifically it's on the side of the road that's closest to the boat dock. So if you're coming from the boat dock, it's the sign that would face that traffic coming back. They were extremely appreciative when we had the two signs installed previously, and they were heartbroken that someone decided to take one home. So if we could just look into that and see, possibly if we could kind of remediate that. Because she apparently served children at that facility. The other, the other thing, and looking at the county committees, I think is what they're called, the appointees by us, I've got two that I need to reappoint that apparently I missed. So on the library board, I need to, according to the documents here, Tom Koppenhaber's term had expired as of June 30th. Am I correct?
We took care of that with the meeting that you were out.
Cool. Okay, so they've already been, and Mr. Weinberger?
He's been sworn in and everything, he's good.
Okay, and Mr. Weinberger on, idiot, outstanding, sir. You didn't know he was taking me to Raze when I got on his board, did you? Okay, good. So that takes care of that. One other thing, I hate to beat up VDOT again, but I've got one more person out on Meyer Street has complained of road conditions. I don't know, can we reach out directly to VDOT to have them maybe send somebody by to take a look at theirs? It's specifically at 329 Meyer Street. Going up Chatham Hill, you hang a left, and I'm not going to name the road because I'll name it wrong. But it's one of the little offshoots just down the street there.
Sounds like that'd be the town area.
It's just outside.
Oh, it's just outside?
It's just outside.
And I promised her I'd go by and do it, and seven days later, I still haven't done it. So life's just kicked me in the rear end. I can't get out there to look at it in the daylight. So if we could reach out to maybe have them have somebody come by and take a look at it. Apparently, it's pretty brutal from what she tells me.
Just the asphalt itself.
Well, I think it's water erosion is what it is. So I think it's a culvert or a drain or something that's eroding.
Is it on Meyer Street?
Yeah, she says Meyer Street.
Is that the dead end?
I think it, yeah, I think it is. It turns off of Chatham Hill Road. Yes, and it does eventually dead end. So it's through several neighborhoods. According to what she's telling me verbally, it was.
Maybe that it's not VDOT maintained, it's not a VDOT road.
Okay, I don't know. I didn't promise anything. I just said I would bring it up, and we'll try to take a look at it and see what, if anything, could be addressed. And that is the conclusion of my business. On a personal note, again, I would like to echo the thanks of our veterans. Being a grandson and a son of Navy veterans, thank you all. Yeah, and I'm finished. Thank you.
Ms. Deal, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief, but I do want to touch on one thing that's really important to me this whole entire night. We've done a lot of things recently that I've been really proud of, and one of the top things is EMD. And that's for a couple of reasons. One is, and I'm probably going to get a lot of looks when I say this, but our healthcare system in this region is failing. And I think anything that we can do on the public safety end when it comes to EMD and dispatch, and when it comes to having ALS for our citizens when the ambulance shows up on scene for an emergency, I think it's super important. But I'm super proud of Ms. Bogle and what she did to receive that historic award tonight. As the only female on this board, I can say that I can relate to being in labor. And you distinctly remember the voice of the coach that is helping you through that process. And two times I've done it, I don't remember what the nurse looked like, but I distinctly remember her voice in my ear. And I can assure you, that mother is never going to forget Carrie Bogle's voice and what she did for her. So I just want to say kudos to Carrie and the whole dispatch team and the EMD service they provide. I think it's incredible, and she's very deserving of that award. And if the mother. And if the mother had have made it to the hospital in Smith County, she couldn't have had a baby there. So another frustration to throw towards our healthcare system. But moving on, I appreciate our veterans and all they do, and Mr. Atkins, Mr. Wyler. I know we certainly appreciate you all in your service. And appreciate the staff, all you do. Rose, I still see you there in the room. Thank you for all you do at Smith County Public Library. It's super important to me because of my young children, and we're just grateful to have programs that we can participate in. And I really appreciate your insight into how the library can impact this community, and it's outside of just reading books. You, you stay on the pulse of what's going on with addiction and all these other things. And my seventy-five-year-old aunt told me, she came there to the library the other day to learn how to use her cellphone. So thank you for taking that stress off of us family members who have told them eighty times, like, here's how you work your cellphone. So I'm hoping that she learned it better from you than she has from us. So thank you for all you do. And of course, Mr. Wasson, I see you there in the room too. Appreciate you always having great input and helping guide us as a board. And thank the staff and fellow board members for all you do. And you all have a good night, and thanks for allowing me to join remotely.
Roscoe.
Just thanks to all my staff, all my girls and stuff, they really helped me get through this. I wouldn't know which end was up if they didn't take care of it. Rose does a great job, the librarian. Glad to see you here every time, but you surprised me tonight, you didn't talk. But bless everybody, have a good trip, honey.
All right, thank you. And I'm last, but I, I didn't do that on purpose, it just, I draw the cards, and that's where I came out. But first off, today is National Farmers' Day, so on the way home, you bump into a farmer, tell him thank you. I didn't know that till late this afternoon. Two, I can't believe Sean didn't have a budget amendment for us tonight. He's failing, failing on the job, I'm sure. And three, on a more serious note, remember our troops over in the Middle East. It's probably a high tension time for them right now. I remember our troops everywhere, but give a little extra thought to the ones in the Middle East and for the people of Israel. You know, I'm glad we don't have that in this country. We, we, we have the freedom, we, we need to enjoy it. Having said that, I was happy to see a crowd here tonight. I'm always happy to see the faces we have, but I was really pleased to walk in, it was full. I wish there hadn't gotten a man left, but anyway, happy to see the public take a little interest in what goes on in the county government. And with that being said, I believe we need a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to enter into closed session in the Virginia Code Section two-point-two, dash, three-seven-one-one. A three, discussion and consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purposes for the disposition of publicly held real property regarding Project Boat Tyne.
Do we have a second? Have a second. I'd like to, can we amend that to include Ms. Christian being able to speak?
Only if he doesn't say anything.
All righty, we're, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All righty, thank you. Floor is yours.